Five P M. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
I move that we consider the claims.
Okay, give us an amount maybe.
Oh, you want me to?
Do you have that open?
Yes, she does.
I don't. Seven hundred ninety-seven thousand ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Is that the right line?
That is correct.
Okay.
Manual check?
A manual check in the amount of thirty-eight thousand nine seventy-nine eighty-eight. Payroll and liabilities for January twenty nineteen and the amount of four fifty-six one twelve fifty-three. For a total of one million two hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those claims?
Your Honor. Maya, would you explain what happened on that amount of money that the state is taking from us?
Councilman Larson, if you're referring to the Wyoming Department of Transportation claims?
Yes.
Okay, the total amount of claims for Wyoming Department of Transportation is five hundred and forty-six thousand nine oh three oh nine. This includes all of the billing for the North Federal Construction Project, which includes the Streetlight Project, the Storm Sewer, and the water and sewer invoicing for November, December, and January. We were receiving delayed invoices from YDOT. This pays everything up through January, and we have received February's invoice, which will be presented at a next, the next coming Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, motion passes. Any other business before the Finance Committee?
No, Your Honor.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, then we'll adjourn at six forty-seven P M.
I now call the February fifth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven o'clock. The pledge of allegiance will be, pledge of allegiance will be given by Mayor Guard and Councilman Kyle Larson will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton. Father, we're thankful for the citizens of Riverton which support and labor on our behalf. Please watch over and bless them. Bless us this evening that we might be mindful of them, that we might serve them properly. We humbly ask this, name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Guard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Sean Peterson from tonight's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I declare quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes. The motion passes. Communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not already on the agenda will be given the opportu- that is, excuse me, on the agenda will be given the opportunity to speak later. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium to, and to identify themselves for the record.
Hello, this is Kathy Klein.
Thanks Kathy, how are you tonight?
Do I start talking now?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to come in front of you guys tonight. April fourth of last year, I came to the city hall here and participated in a placemaking session that the Wyoming Business Council provided to people from throughout the area. It was one of the requirements, if you wanted to apply for a grant from the Business Council, that you attend this meeting. It was a really great meeting, a lot of people in the room here were at it. Some of the key takeaways were that communities wanted to develop places to gather that, that community people can enjoy, to help their community connect together and to grow, and just to be positive places for people to feel good about. And that those kind of places would also attract visitors. I forgot to mention, I'm Kathy Klein, I work for the Ranger, but more importantly, I'm a member of the Wind River Visitors Council, and I am currently the president of the Riverton Rotary Club. And that's what this pertains to.
And you serve on the fast.
And I serve on the fast, and I do a bunch of other sides. So, we were looking, we, we also learned in this meeting that the best security for an area is to have people travel. And that was important to me on another project that we had. And we were looking for some grant funding. I was just getting ready to go into my term as president for Rotary at that time. And so I was looking for, you know, what could our group do that would serve the community? Some of the primary initiatives for Rotary are to support community development, to support peace, and to help kids find their ways through the world. We had had some projects in the past that had some maintenance issues that we knew we needed to deal with. One was the fire pit down at the River Walk, between the freezing that gets under the bricks and pops them up, and then the vandals who do different things with them. We were having some issues there. It's a good area, the schools were using it, it was great for STEM learning. But we had to solve some problems, and security being one of them. So, this is when the teachings from the placemaking grant, session about people traffic being great security became important to me. So about this point, I hired myself a Job Corps intern to help us look at these projects. We wanted to investigate what the community needed and what we might be able to do about them. In that process, we developed, this is a Google map, that we wanted to see where the opportunities were and what the community needs were. So on this map, we placed the walkways, the parkways, the city parks, the public schools, county fairs on there. And then we looked at some other opportunities such as art installations, current attractions, current rotary projects, tree planting opportunities. And this would eventually allow us to develop a power of ten exercise, which was part of the placemaking training. The intern did this with me. And then we started looking at where we were going to go with this. So my first intern's name was Kylie Sams. And she started by researching with the city, what would be the process? And we met with Eric, thank you very much, and talked about what the city needed from us, which directions to go, started identifying other stakeholders that were going to need to be included in the process and talked with, and that type of thing. And then started looking at the city's assets and challenges and opportunities. Now, some of the ideas that we came up with were presented to the city, to the, to Depot staff, and Rotary for okay. And some of those things where we looked at rails to trails, and potentially doing some art murals there, and some display projects. We looked at the River Walk. It had lots of opportunities. We considered a labyrinth, which is a nice peaceful kind of walk you can do, a kids' learning maze, a community garden, a boulder park, and a dog park. And one of the things in talking with Alan and Tamore from the Depot were, was that that park in particular, they were hoping to keep it as a natural setting, not so much the manicured lawn kind of, of park. And, and so we were looking for things that fit with that. We did look at some of our maintenance issues we needed to deal with. And then through everything, our filter was looking at placemaking and tourism, and how we can make the place more attractive for people to come and spend a little more time with us. Second intern I had, his name was Nessma Cloud, she took a deeper dive into these projects and looked at the technical aspects, what, you know, from a construction standpoint, what we were going to need, and then helped us figure out where we were going to get funding. She also made the presentation then to the Job Corps faculty, because we were going to be really dependent on them to help us do the work that was going to be involved. And in fact, they believed that they could help us. One with the boulder park, which is really simple, it's simply taking big giant boulders that the city already owns and putting them around the trees, down around the River Walk, and so there's something kids can climb over. And, so that's, that's an easy, we don't even need money for that one. But they also believe they could help us with a dog park. So this slide here is showing you the power of ten exercise we needed to do for the placemaking folks at Wyoming Business Council. They had grants, monies available, but power of ten was a requirement. And what power of ten is, is it asks you to pick five items in your town that are successful and doing great. And then five other items that need improvement. And we identified the national brand hotels, the casino, the fairgrounds, the airport, and the college as five really successful places that attract people. But five that could use a little more work included the Riverton Museum, downtown, the walk pathways, both Rails to Trails and River Walk, and then the Heritage Museum. And what you should see in the map, I hope, is how these things start to connect with each other. So if you can make your improvements in places where other things already exist, you start creating a critical mass that can actually have an impact on, on what people do. So, through all the various projects we, we were looking through, we found that there was consensus amongst a number of people in developing a dog park. And this map here is showing you the fire pit there on the River Walk. The green areas are where the new tree plantings went in this last year. The purple and then red, where you see were areas that we had identified as land that we could do improvements on. And the red then is where we're looking at placing the dog park itself. Now, this space is a one-hundred-foot by three-hundred-foot space. It would be divided into two compartments, one that would satisfy dogs with a long stride, and one that would satisfy dogs with a short stride. So, and then each, each compartment would have a double gated entrance. So you have, what I'm going to describe as sort of a foyer before they get into the big room. So, it's a lot of cyclone fencing. The ground needs leveled, you know, needs, the surface needs prepared. We would be using wood chips as the surface, and then the chain link fencing around it. Couple things on surface. In our research, we found that grass is really not a great surface, we didn't want to go that way. Wood chips are an okay surface. They might grow some mushrooms, you got to stir them up from time to time. The best would be gravel, and we'd actually like to see if we can get some gravel. But right now, at this moment, we know we can do wood chips, and, and for the moment, that'll take care of it. Doggy stations. It would also have doggy stations, and then signage. The signage would tell people what's the appropriate use for the space, so they know what their responsibilities are. The signage, we actually would also be able to put signage up around the fire pit itself, so that we can tell people what the appropriate usage of that space is, which is not burning wood pallets and leaving your nails behind. So this is the timeline that we've been working on. We got our grants submitted. There are two places we submitted for funding. One was to the state of Wyoming for the placemaking grant, and the other was to Rotary International. We, we have received thus far three thousand dollars from Rotary International, and a conditional award from the state of Wyoming for twenty-five hundred, which is what we requested. The condition that, that still stands before we can actually get that money into our hot little hands is that we need a letter from the mayor or the council that says, you know about this project, and you approve it moving forward. And so that's what I'm hoping you'll consider tonight. After we went public with the dog park, Rebecca had helped me, and we had gone, had a newspaper article. We got an email from Enberg Miller. They had been involved in the area in the past, and they were willing to do the schematics for us pro bono. So that was wonderful. So that's one of our next steps, once we know our money's all lined out. We're working with Kyle on an M O U, so you'll see me here in a couple more weeks for us to go over that. And then we'll dig into ordering materials. Job Corps intends to start the work in May after the snow has gone away. And then the Rotary will install the fencing in June. And our hopes is to have everything up and running before rendezvous happens. The next pages that you have in your packet, these are simply endorsements from people that we received about a dog park. So a lot of good enthusiasm for it. Mostly people are talking about having a safe space. If you live in town, you can walk your dog on a leash, but you don't have a really great place for your animal to run, unless the middle of the road sounds good to you, which is not typically a great place. So, this dog park would really, would really help that out, and, and so people wouldn't have to drive out of town to find some over country for their, their babies to do their thing. Any questions?
That was actually, this maybe is not as much of a question, but we just had our meeting last night where we were discussing with the Fremont County School District Twenty-five Rec Board. We actually had twenty-five thousand dollars in grants that still need to be given out this year that specifically earmarked for beautification projects. Now, the other grant timeframe has already come and passed, but the specific beautification projects, the window's still open for that. So I would encourage you, if you're still needing funds, to come and bring that to the rec board.
Terrific. There's two things that that will really help with. One, I need about a thousand more dollars, and, and so I'm, I'm there for that. But the other thing is, is this is just phase one that, that we're doing through Rotary, and that's getting the basics down. Other folks in the community will raise funds and start looking at putting in, then water fountains, which we have water available, benches, potentially covered spaces, things like that. So there's a lot more we can do with the park after we get the basics in. Thank you.
Mike.
Your Honor, Kathy, now, when you say the doggy stations, now, is that just down in that area, or are you talking about the whole River Walk? I know there was some talk at one time about.
We'd like to get at least four in at the River Walk. So we'd need one in each compartment at the park, at the dog park itself. But also one at each end, so that if you're simply a walker with your dog on your leash, you still know to grab a, a bag and take it with you.
On each end of the River Walk, or?
Pardon me?
So, what, what, down there, all by the?
All by the River Walk.
Fire pit and all that area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I would recommend that we get you a letter of support so you can get your funding. And I would assume that, that we could put that out tomorrow probably, don't you think?
Yes, Your Honor. It might be easiest just to pull it, pu- pu- put together a motion, the direct staff to do so, and then we can get it put out.
I would entertain a motion from the, for the dog park on the River Walk, or a letter of support from the Riverton City Council.
Your Honor, I would move that we give a letters of support for the River Walk Dog Park.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would just like to thank Kathy for all the work that she's done on this.
I've had a lot of, a lot of help.
We do appreciate your efforts down there to beautify that. We need to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thanks Kathy, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll get that for you tomorrow, okay? Tony?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to direct somebody? Will you get this, that letter?
Your Honor, I'll prepare it and have it for your signature tomorrow.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
Appreciate it. Could the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by time only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, executive session. Approval of the minutes, January twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, February fifth, two thousand nineteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for February fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there any other items?
Yes, Your Honor, specifically the recommendations from the Finance Committee were for bills to be paid in the amount of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents, manual check, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, payroll liabilities for January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of four hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-three cents, for a total of one million two hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The airport board appointments of Dean Pronto and, and Mick Pryor, would the Public Works Director report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to the municipal code, the airport board is established to be your advisory body for anything going on at Riverton Regional Airport. Mr. Mick Pryor and Mr. Dean Pronto have served faithfully on that board for several years now, and they have expressed interest in continuing that service. And so staff recommends that council approves Mayor Guard's appointment, maybe I should say reappointment, of these two individuals to continue their service on the airport board. And I would stand for any questions, Your Honor.
Any further questions? It's kind of a unique board, and it's kind, it's nice to have those members that have a little bit of their, their experience, and they certainly do. I think Dean, through his letter, said he'd been on for ten years. He's currently the chair, so we do appreciate it. The Chair would entertain a motion to reappoint Dean Pronto and Mick Pryor to the airport board.
Your Honor, I would move that we appoint Dean Pronto and Mick Pryor to the airport board.
Second.
No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Bid award for police vehicles. The fleet director, please.
Your Honor, members of the council, I'm Brian Engleston, the fleet su- fleet sanitation supervisor for the city. Wanted to, well, I guess I'm more pleased to announce that the state of Wyoming, it, some highway patrol cars, and we were able to join off that bid, and also secure some police cars for the police department. Benefit of using the governmental entities cooperative purchasing clause in the statute allows one agency to actually do the bid. But it gives political subdivisions the ability to use that bid as well, go after our vehicles. Obviously, the state of Wyoming has more buying power than we do, so we get the benefit of their bulk purchase for our vehicles. We did trim one option off after I talked to the chief of police. We really didn't think the lane departure item, or option, was necessary. Might tip off a burglar if you're sneaking around in the black, blacked out. At any rate, the bid per vehicle is thirty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine oh six. The two vehicles total is seventy-one thousand seven ninety-eight twelve. Council bid, or budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the entire project. We, we'll do all the upfitting of these vehicles, the equipping and everything in-house. However, we have to buy that material, so it's eleven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars per vehicle, which brings us to a grand total of ninety-four thousand six hundred and fifty-eight twelve. And leave us, uh, fifty-three hundred dollars roughly for incidental expenses, tiling the vehicles. And leave us $5,300 roughly for incidental expenses, tiling the vehicles, getting license plates for them and such. And I'm sure we'll have to procure some wiring and stuff like that, so. And that also includes decal-ing.
We appreciate that. I understand they're locally bought also.
Yes. Fremont Chevrolet, Buick and GMC in Riverton.
Yeah.
This is a low state bidder again this year, so.
We appreciate that information. Does anybody have anything further to add? The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two police vehicles from the cooperative purchase agreement through the state.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance number 19-001, second reading, shipping containers in residential zoning. Community Director report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Following discussion at the January 15, 2019, meeting regarding ordinance 19-001, council requested changes to the original ordinance making allowances for shipping containers within residential and commercial office zoning not exceeding 160 square feet in gross floor area or an 8 by 20 shipping container. In order to protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Riverton, and following Casper's example, almost verbatim, the ordinance now stipulates shipping containers comply with Section 311 of the International Building Code for Group S2 Storage and the International Fire Code, Section 315 for Storage. Setback requirements were included, as well as requirements for permanent foundations. At this time, staff recommends approval of ordinance 19-001 on second reading. And with that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Mr. Bailey.
Again, I guess I don't recall in our conversation last meeting talking about having to put them on a permanent foundation. I guess, do we require any other storage structure that's 160 square feet to be on a permanent concrete foundation?
Your Honor?
Yes.
No, we don't. The reason for that, one, it matches with what Casper had in their ordinance. And then, two, given the weight of these items, they're substantially heavier than stick-built structures. So that was the reasoning behind that addition.
I had a couple of questions. Anybody else have any? Your Honor?
If I may, I apologize for the interruption. It may be more appropriate to have a motion for approval and then discussion. I apologize.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance number 19001 on second reading. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now we're here. Anybody else have any further discussion? Mike?
I guess my other question is, so do other storage containers or buildings, are they required to follow the same International Building Code, 311-3? Is that a common...
Your Honor?
Fire code they have to meet?
Yes. Not typically. Again, this is almost verbatim out of Casper's code. The reason for that is because of their exceptional strength. The threat of explosion is exacerbated because if they're sealed, then you have a much more volatile reaction. And so to limit that, or the potential for explosion, placing an S2 category on them limits what can be stored within the container.
Any further?
I guess, Your Honor, I would move that we amend the motion to exclude Section A and Section C, which is the fire code part and the permanent foundation part. I don't have any problem with the 50 feet from the front of the property line. You know, I think this would put them on the same footing, no pun intended, as other storage buildings that we have in the city.
Second.
Before we go to that, aren't the current, isn't the current square footage 200 instead of 160?
Your Honor, that's correct. For a stick-built structure to be, to not require a permanent foundation, it would be 200 square feet.
It would be my suggestion to add that to your amendment.
I would amend my amendment to include 200 square feet instead of 160.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? So we need to take a vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment of excluding Section A and Section C? And increasing the square footage available to the storage unit up to 200 square feet?
Your Honor, before we vote on that, I, I guess, I just wanted to clarify. When we had been discussing shipping containers last time, we'd been talking about ensuring that they have adequate ventilation. And I think that's, that was, the discussion was, yes, the smaller ones, just in terms of looks, might be better, but that doesn't address the ventilation issues. So it's my understanding that the whole point behind subsection A, that would address the ventilation issues. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we were to get rid of that, we wouldn't have anything that would address ventilation issues that you might have with shipping containers?
That's correct. I could not recommend that.
Mr. Bailey.
Your Honor, but last time we did also have testimony from Mr. Skaggs that all of the containers he gets have had ventilation in them. So I don't, I don't think it's an issue. I guess I wouldn't have a problem amending one of the line items to say with ventilation, if that's the sticking part.
Kyle?
On Wednesday of last, we met last Tuesday, so anyway, I've been too many meetings. And there was a shipping container parked in front of my parking lot. And we're talking about, for ventilation, we're talking about two inches by eight inches. And it's very, there's no power to it. It's just aspiration, if you will. Without those doors being open, there is no ventilation, because there's no force of movement. There's nothing to occur. So it's a mute point. It's a sealed, it's a sealed container. I mean, those are wonderfully built, and they're meant to withstand all kinds of conditions. One of them is ventilation. So, I mean, that's going to be the greatest thing to store something in, but when the gas container goes in there and is spilled by accident, that's going to be one fun thing to watch.
So do you have a motion to, or add to the amendment? Anything, anything I want to add?
I'm told against.
Okay. So I suppose we better take a vote on the amendment and see if that amendment passes. And then if there's any further motions, we'll add those after we, after we see if this one passes, unless there's further discussion. All in favor of the amendment to exclude Section A and Section C and increase the square footage from 160 to 200? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So we have four to two. The amendment passes. Would you like to make any further amendments before we proceed?
Your Honor?
Yes.
As a point of order, can I read the ordinance by title only first?
Would you please? I don't know why you don't do that.
Proposed ordinance number 19-001 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to revise Chapter 17.20 accessory uses, Section 17.20.030 accessory building and use of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Should be the buzzer on my seat or something that we can catch me up. We need to have a vote on that motion. And the motion that has been changed, the amendment states that we would exclude Section A and Section C and have that square footage placed at 200 square feet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 12, public hearing on 422 East Main Street, sale of property. Community Directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The property at 422 East Main Street has been unused since 1980, 1995, and came into the city of Riverton's ownership in 2010. In its history, the site served as a gas station and dry cleaning enterprise, both of which left contaminants the DEQ required mitigation of. Ms. Amanda Henry of Brown Sugar Coffee Roastery has submitted a formal offer to purchase the property. Ms. Henry is aware of the contamination issues and is prepared to complete mitigation activities if the sale of the property is approved. Pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-112, acceptance of an offer, the purchased property is contingent on the city determining the sale will benefit the economic development of the community, then acquiring market analysis of the property and advertising the sale for a period of three weeks culminating in a public hearing, which we were at tonight. Two market analyses were performed for the referenced property. The first by the city in the amount of $60,000, and a second for Ms. Henry in the amount of $56,000. In light of additional design requirements particular to the site's remediation, Ms. Henry has made an offer of $52,000. At this time, staff is recommending acceptance of Ms. Henry's offer to purchase lots 21 through 24, Block 11 of the original town of Riverton, AKA 422 East Main Street, with the stipulation of a right-of-reverter clause to be attached to the property requiring construction to begin on the site no more than 18 months after the sale. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move that we open a public hearing regarding the sale of the 422 East Main Street property.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. I now declare a public, the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted according to, according with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and to identify themselves for the record.
Hello, I'm Amanda Henry, owner of Brown Sugar Coffee Roastery. So as Eric just explained, my current location's at 303 East Main. I'm looking to purchase the property at 422 East Main, mostly because I've outgrown my business. I like to stay downtown. I'm dedicated to the beautification of Riverton. It's also an eyesore having a corner lot on our main street that hasn't been in use for a very long time, other than parking at the moment. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to getting to a new location that I can beautify. I guess my vision for the lot would be to have a new build that would have some outdoor seating, some spacing for events, possibly even like a little play area for children, something that's going to draw people to the downtown area. Yeah, so it is my request for the city to go ahead and move forward with the purchase of 422 East Main.
Thanks, Amanda. Appreciate it. Is there any, anyone else that would like to address the council?
I'm Sheila Graham. I have Graham's Gluten Free at 414 East Main. And my concern is, one of the best things about the area is people can park, come, go. You know, there's plenty of movement in that area. We have a lot of elderly and compromised immune people coming and going. If they park like over on Broadway, that's quite a bit of a distance for them. My building right now, we have about two places in front of the building to park, and that's it. We have four employees, plus myself, and then truck deliveries. We have a semi that comes in from Spokane, that that truck usually has to come across that parking area. We have problems in the alley. The alley's a little too tight for the larger trucks. So those would be our concerns.
We appreciate your efforts there. So, thank you very much. Any others that would like to address the council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Amanda, did you have that property behind the 422 East Main? Or they're close to it?
Yeah, so the property on Main Street, right behind that is an alleyway. Right behind that is a house, that's a rental house. It's got a three-unit house. There's an empty lot behind that. I own that, yes.
And Amanda, were you intending to make that a parking lot, or...
I have no intentions at this moment of doing it. From what I had understand, discussing it with several people on the parking issue, I was told there wasn't an issue with parking, since we do have a public parking spot. And then we usually have plenty of Main Street parking. But, I mean, if it comes to it that we need more parking, then, yeah, I have that space available that we can discuss.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
That section of the downtown area is grandfathered for parking. And so years and years ago, we, we did put parking behind the Kusels, that whole half-block behind Kusels is a, is a parking area for the downtown, which doesn't help you with your truck deliveries at all. But there is no requirement for additional parking for anyone in those blocks to, to provide additional parking, is the answer to that problem. Any further discussions?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept the offer from Amanda Henry to purchase 422 East Main Street from the city of Riverton for the amount of $52,000 for the purpose of economic growth pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-112.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Item 13, the consideration of the First Interstate's Water Service Agreement. Oh, excuse me. Mayor, would you like to speak to us?
As you know, Mr. Mayor, council and staff, this has been an issue that's been near and dear to my heart for the last 10, 12 years. So it's nice to come to some closure on it. And I think that the coffee shop that Amanda is planning on sounds like something that will be a great addition to the community downtown. So I applaud her for that. At this time, given that we've had this vote, I would like to request the return of that rendering, which I purchased with my own money, and I will file it with some other dreams that I have.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your efforts, all the way through. Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate your efforts, all the way through. We'll consider the First Interstate Bank's water service agreement. Public Works Director report.
Thank you, Your Honor. First Interstate is looking to sell a portion of the property that they own currently at the corner of Main and Broadway. They no longer need the footprint that they currently have and want to sell what is titled as Lot Five of their complex. That area is the farthest west portion of the building that they own. Right now, there's only one water service to the First Interstate complex. When Lot Five is sold and divested from First Interstate Bank, there is a conflict with our code as far as water service requirements. Riverton Municipal Code, Section thirteen oh eight three hundred currently states that each property shall be served by its own service line and no connection to the water utility shall be made by extending the service line from one property to another property. So once Lot Five is divested, we're in direct conflict with that section of code. However, Section thirteen oh eight three hundred B allows the City Council to establish contractual arrangements related to the code I just quoted, in order to help with the compliance related to having independent water services to each separate property. Staff has been working with First Interstate Bank since October in developing an appropriate agreement to ensure their compliance. One of the things that we wanted to consider with them was the cost of digging up Main Street in order to connect a brand-new service line for that Lot Five addition. In order to avoid the extra expense and the inconvenience on the community and the impact on that infrastructure, we've looked at several options and we feel that the agreement before you, the agreement for temporary waiver, is a good option to ensure that First Interstate Bank and the future owner of Lot Five complies with Riverton Municipal Code, but they also have an ability to comply in a way that makes sense. The provisions of that agreement are in your packet, and just to highlight a few of those, the agreement allows for a temporary connection to run from the existing service line that currently feeds First Interstate Bank. That temporary connection will be made in the sidewalk area or the right-of-way on Main Street. That temporary connection will run to the new addition or the, I should say, the sold addition, Lot Five. It will have its own water meter, it will have its own shut-off valve, and it will stay as such until Main Street is reconstructed, or it is found that the existing service line fails, or it is found that there is insufficient pressure for both of those properties to be serviced by one service line. The agreement is binding upon the owner of Lot Five and will move forward with whoever purchases it in the future. There's no budget impact for this agreement, and staff recommends that the City Council approves the agreement for temporary waiver of Section thirteen oh eight three hundred. And I would stand for any questions at this time.
Kyle?
What size of service line goes to First Interstate?
Your Honor, Councilman, that's a one-inch service line.
So that should be able to service both of those adequately? Say, somebody was going to go in and do eighty-five percent remodel, they would then have to put in a sprinkler system. Would that handle that sprinkler system?
Your Honor, we can verify those, but we have to make sure that compliance with other sections of the code are made as part of this agreement. Dependent on what the future owner of Lot Five does, we can determine that. If they put a microbrewery into that lot, it's probably not going to be sufficient with a single service line for both complexes on a one-inch service. Right now, we're trying to assist with the development of our downtown and assist with the sale of a property, but we, we can definitely look at that, should the new occupant want to remodel, want to change the current use and require more service. I feel that that pressure requirement in the agreement addresses that. If it's found that there's not sufficient pressure on that one-inch line, that they would then be required to make their full connection to the main, which is on the north side of Main Street.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Riverton and the First Interstate Bank.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, all those opposed, seeing none, motion passes. Council Committee reports. Councilmember Roundtable, Carly, you want to start us off tonight?
I attended the Solutions Committee meeting last week. We just discussed ways to deal with some of the issues that we have here in the city with intoxication and drug use and things like that. I'll let Rebecca talk about the fun thing that we had over the weekend.
Thank you. Tim?
I already mentioned, had the opportunity to attend the rec board meeting yesterday. We have a lot of really good proposals out there in this town for people to do recreation. I really appreciate people willing to put themselves out there and make efforts in that regard. We had discussion a little bit about how the county rec board frequently is inundated with proposals from Lander, and they're supposed to serve the whole county, and they don't get near as many from Riverton. So I would encourage anyone who has rec-related issues, we just had Ms. Klein that was talking about one, or proposals like that, that they go to the county. I think March is the deadline for that, is what we were discussing. Right now, they just have so many from Lander and we're getting a little bit outnumbered when it comes to county funds, and I would hope and would encourage people if they have ideas to go to the county rec board with them and, and take your proposals there. Particularly if somebody had proposals that they made to the School District Twenty-Five rec board that maybe didn't get fully funded or didn't get all the funds that they wanted or had other ideas, definitely you still have the ability to go and speak to the county board about that. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Tim, that's real good information. I would encourage everybody to do just exactly what he said. Councilman Bailey?
I have nothing for this week.
Nothing?
Nothing.
It's hard to believe. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor, so with the Parks Committee, we are developing our master plan to present to council and present to the community as far as improving our parks, which is what we were tasked to do from the very beginning. So we've been working diligently on that the past couple of weeks. I want to report on the awesome First Annual Winter Rendezvous Games we had this weekend. It was incredible, and I, I'm still feeling like I'm on the cloud right now of how awesome that was. I want to thank the community for all their, their participation and their involvement, and then especially want to thank city staff. Tony Tolstead was there Friday night through all of Saturday, same with the mayor, up until setup, cleanup, last people leave the park was the mayor and city administrator, which was amazing. Want to thank Megan Sims, she worked very hard on registrations, flyers, all that kind of stuff. The police department for their participation in that, especially in the vehicle push-pull, that was really awesome. I don't want to keep going into it, but I just want to say that was the most amazing thing ever, and we're going to do this again at the end of June, so be prepared to get your teams together and ready for that. Report on the Chamber Board, I have not got to attend the meeting yet because last, last month's meeting was canceled, but Thursday I'll attend my first chamber meeting, so we'll get really involved with that, I hope, with the city and the chamber. Business after hours is scheduled for this Thursday at US Bank at five PM, so if you guys want to attend that, you can be a community member, business, it doesn't matter, attend that, socialize with your peers and others and get involved in the community. I just attended the PAWS meeting. They meet, currently they're meeting pretty much every Tuesday evening because they're preparing for their big event, Marty PAWS. There's a Facebook event posted, as well as flyers all over town. This will be March second at six thirty at St. Margaret's Gym. You can get tickets from any of the board members, also purchasing, you can purchase them at the PAWS Shelter and down at Stock Dock. They'll have live music and a bunch of other fun activities. There won't be an auction or anything like that, it's really just to have fun, listen to music, get really good food, Ms. Jenny is cooking that night. And that's about all I have as far as my committees.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the community for supporting the rendezvous games.
Kyle?
Just to add to what Tim said, we, there was requested funds of two hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it was granted a hundred and seventy-one thousand two fifty-six. And the important thing is that seventy percent of the county rec board, seventy percent, goes to other than the county. It goes to a little town over next to the mountains. So take your requests and make them heard. There's money available. People have said, well, there's not enough money. And I told one friend of mine, there's plenty of money, you just have to ask for it. So if we have worthy projects, present them over, get your applications from the county, submit them, and I'm positive you'll get a smile on your face. Second thing we had was most interesting, you know, we've been contributing a large share of our money to the county waste district. I don't call it that in public, I call it something else. And so we were discussing that in the last meeting, which is held the third Monday of the month. And when I came here, the Lander landfill was going to be closed absolutely, positively, must be 2024. So we needed everything we could throw in there, and so we would haul garbage from Riverton to Lander versus Sandral, and the money that they were saving, they were filling up this pit. Well, 2016 rolled around and we had a new sheriff in town, and all of a sudden, well, it wasn't going to close in 2024, might be 2036. And so we were asking about the Shoshone landfill, which is open only on Saturdays, but it's open Monday through Friday to all of the asbestos coming out of Lander. And there's a special deal there. So the question was asked, when is Shoshone going to be shut down? And it was the same, we don't know yet. So it's an interesting thing, and the budget, don't worry about it, they've got plenty of money, they've got fourteen million over there. That is because all of our garbage heaps have to have perpetual care on them. That means monitoring water and all the surroundings so that you do not get straddled with the government. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks, Kyle, that's a good report. That's not an easy committee to sit on. I appreciate you going. City Administrators report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start out by thanking Rebecca for, sorry, Councilwoman Schatz, for all of her work with the rendezvous games and all of those who worked on this project. Councilwoman Borders was there, the mayor, of course, was there, but also throughout all the planning phase, one of the goals of this community has been, and this council has been, the development of events, and this event could not have been finer. Thank you very much for that, that it really, we have heard nothing but good things, it's a good thing. With that said, moving on, we are in receipt of a request that I wanted to bring forward. I had forwarded it on previously with regard to fireworks. I have a request for individuals to, for individuals to be able to launch fireworks or, or use fireworks during a certain time period at New Year's and then again at Fourth of July. Currently, our code being eight point zero four zero one zero, if anybody's looking, prohibits fireworks. And the exception to that is fireworks displays that is authorized by council, of course. The request is to amend the, our Riverton Municipal Code via ordinance to allow for a couple hours on those dates. With that being said, we have that request, it was a worthy conversation, so I put it to council at this point. Is that something you would like to see staff bring forward as, as a potential ordinance change?
Kyle?
I, I live in a bunch of lawbreakers. Because anytime you're around Sixteenth East and by the school, Aspen School, after nine o'clock at night, there are rockets going off every which way. I've, I've found all kinds of firecrackers in my yard. I don't know how they got there or exploded or whatever, but I would think that as long as we are where we are and we sell them in the county, we should be able to observe the twenty, the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve in an appropriate manner. I see no reason why, unless it's a severe drought and we've got dry, but then we can change that, you know, it's, it doesn't have to be set in concrete, but I think it should be allowed.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I got back home to Riverton in 2015, and I didn't know what to do. My sister lives in Lander, so I drove over to Lander on the Fourth of July, and I attended their rodeo and, and spent the evening there, and I drove back to Riverton. I mean, I left Lander around nine thirty PM, and it was just amazing. I know we don't want to talk about Lander because we're Rivertino, but it was so incredible watching these fireworks go off, everybody just leaving town, and everyone's laughing and having a good time, and I drove back into Riverton, this was in 2015, I drove back into Riverton, and it was just dead silent. There was nothing going on. And I, and I, where I was living at the time, I had to pass by, you know, Broadway, I went by Bar Ten, and I mean, it was just darkness. It was just quiet in Riverton. I said, Riverton, at it back, I said, Riverton needs something like that. And I, I think that if we can allow these types of things to happen in our community for these special occasions, we can, we can be the place that people come to for those holidays, which in turn, people will eat here, people will, 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 you know, go to our local businesses, and I said, whatever we can do to get people coming to our community safely, I say go for it. And I also am a friend of a, of a gentleman there that works for the Lander Police Department, and I've asked him, hey, how is the Fourth of July, is it crazy? And, and he said, you know, for the most part, people do police themselves. Like if anything, we're giving people rides places, they're, they're not, they're not having to deal with, with troublemakers because people are looking after each other, and I think that's what we can make Riverton as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I, I think we ought to give it a try and let people prove how responsible they're going to be. I'm optimistic.
I guess the only, Your Honor, the only question I have is, would there be a restriction of any kind on the types of fireworks? I mean, are we going to be doing the big, you know, things in the street? Are we limited to, you know, small things? How's that going to work?
Your Honor, we would have to research that, but generally speaking, we would probably try to find other verbiage that addresses exactly what you're talking about. Our current code calls for, it currently says for the purpose of this subsection, model rocket has a definition ascribed to it in Section one dash three of the NFPA National Fire Code. I mean, we can get definitions if we need to. We don't want twelve-inch hot wipers. Some people might, but as a, as a rule, maybe it might not be the thing.
Speak for yourself.
What was your job, what was your job in the military again?
We don't talk a lot about that.
You used to deal with a different definition of the word ordinance, right?
I did, I did. I was in aviation, I was in aviation ordinance, we built big firecrackers. They were outstanding.
But I think the point is, though, if we were going to make any changes to this, it would require an ordinance, we would have to have three readings, it would be something that the public could come to and talk about what they think about it. And I think that's really what it boils down to. Your question is, should we give people the opportunity to come and Your question is, should we give people the opportunity to come and say yea or nay as to whether we want to make an ordinance change to allow that? And I think definitely, as long as we're giving people the chance to come in and say it.
I would agree.
In that case, Your Honor, we'll bring something forward in the next month or so. We have a little bit of time, so.
Or July.
Yes, sir. We'll have plenty of time to advertise, we'll get it done.
Appreciate it.
Your Honor, the next item, just a reminder, we have force committee next week, and I do have, I wanted to end on a high note. Public Works Director Butterfield did draw my attention that the inner-line agreement went live. That is now operational, and Kyle actually pulled up on his computer through, is it United? Through United, straightaway ticket from Seattle and terminating here in Riverton.
Wow.
So, you're one of the first to know. Surprise! So, thank you to all those that were involved, especially Kyle, the FAST team, everybody that's been involved in that. I know it's been one heck of a fight. So, thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
It is amazing.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
We refer to that as being in the dark on the committee, and so it's nice to, it's nice to be in the light. So Kyle has worked hard, I appreciate that. The whole FAST committee is a hard-working group, and they, we've, I went with Kyle this week over to Lander with her hat in her hand and met with the Lander mayor, which was a wonderful opportunity, and I think we'll get some help there, and we appreciate our partners with that airport. And it's just getting better and better, so, thanks, Kyle. Couldn't be better news. I would like to also thank Councilwoman Schatz for her efforts, and I, and they were, they were legion to put that effort on in the park, and not only her, but the Park Committee, and, and her mother doesn't get as much credit as she deserves.
She really doesn't.
She was right there till the very end. George, did you?
Please.
Yeah, please. Pretty please.
I'm George, typical. And the storage units, not to go back, all right? I made a presentation in RECDA meeting, and I had three people ask me about the storage units during that meeting. And I guess my only concern, listening tonight, and I should have said something, but I was waiting for a public comment, so I wasn't good with the procedure, I guess. My concern would be that venting, and if you take that storage unit, and I went and looked at our Realtor codes a little bit, would be a safety issue of a storage unit to taking it to a residential area where there are small children. If that door doesn't have a good access to get back out and doesn't have ventilation, you may want to look at that a third, on your third reading, is, that's a heavy door. You've got a little three, four, five-year-old kid in a non-aeried container playing in their backyard, you may want to look at that a little closer as to proper ventilation to make that a safety issue, because that container's not built for residential, it's a, it's a commercial product. Those storage sheds, you see vent holes air, you see air gap coming up the side, you see air gap coming off the top, and that's what our industry says if those are, I have nothing against them, I think they're wonderful, I think a size ordinance, I told the mayor the other day that a setback is perfect, but there's some serious concern to ventilation, not only from a toxic chemical, but a small child, now that you're putting it in the backyard. That makes some sense, so. I'd like you to look at that on your third reading as to whether that language could be, and maybe Eric would be best to work again on a clause that we could input back in, but that would be my concern from the real estate health and safety side. Please take a second to think about that.
We'll consider it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George. Appreciate it. The games were exceptional, and you can still see the blocks there in the, in the park, and I thought George was going to get up and laud his, his group that he sent down to the games.
I do, I thought, Rebecca, that game was amazing.
And, and I was surprised, we had 16 teams when we were all said and done. We had the television there, we had, we had vendors there, we, we just had, what's, oh, the balloon was there, yeah? And the lantern lighting Friday night was impressive. How many lanterns did we send up?
100.
I thought that's what the number was, so, and, and it was just real enjoyable.
The timing, to have eight events, and to say 10 to four and be done in three, 15? Oh, my God.
We, I don't know if people know, but the group that I had working on it, there was four of us that were like really committed, you know, that we, that were always there, and for about three Sundays in a row, we were practicing those events, the four of us. We had the, you know, the guys that sit in the park all day, they practiced tug-of-war with us, you know? So we, we got the time down perfect, we thought, you know, based off of the 12 teams we hoped. So, I mean, we did work hard on that event, so.
Could you beat those guys in the park?
They beat us. They did, they sure did.
It was just a really good job, and everybody that participated, the sculptors were good, the activities were good, the timing, the weather, we couldn't ask for better weather. So I appreciate everybody that participated. In the evening, there was a chili supper that everybody got to go to, but I was lucky enough to get invited to the fireman's, volunteer fireman's annual banquet, and they put out some numbers that I thought would be interesting to pose to the cities, the citizens of Riverton. Last year was a pretty busy year. We ran a total of 245 calls, 114 of which were fire calls. These 114 calls break down to 14 structure fires, three cooking fires, two chimney fires, 10 trash fires, seven vehicle fires, and 78 grass fires. So the spring, when you get too busy to light your place on fire, you might think of these guys. It goes on and gives a whole bunch of numbers, but down at the very bottom of this, of this information, all this information breaks down to a total of 1,806 hours and 39 minutes of man-hours on scene. And these are volunteers from the City of Riverton and the county. I appreciate their efforts, I appreciate what they do for us, makes us safe, gives us the opportunity to take care of the things, and maybe that's one reason we're so confident in, in our safety in, in our areas, because we have men that do this. Their actual response time, if I can break through this and find it, 6 minutes and 47 seconds, and from, and from dispatch time, 9 minutes and 2 seconds till they're on scene. Pretty impressive. And those are our fellow citizens that work hard for what they do. I'd like to appreciate them for what they do, and they also fed me dinner. I didn't get to go to the chili and awards assembly, which I missed, but it was, I did see it on Facebook. There are games, last Wednesday night, CWC games were spectacular. We, we played Casper, Dave and I were there, and it was amazing game. CWC, both men and women lost, but they were really good games, and we have those games again this Wednesday, and I would encourage anybody to show up there and enjoy that. They're 5:30 and 7:30. Once again, my office is open from, from 5:00 to 6:30 on Monday nights, and my telephone number is 851-1627. My office number is 857-7691. And we need your calls, we need your help, we appreciate all the things that you do for us. Do we have a need of an executive session?
No, Your Honor, we do not.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn regular session meeting.
I'm moved. Second?
Excuse me, excuse me. Yes.
Removed. Hi, my name is Bruce Camminga, and I own Specialty Marine down at the south end of town here. Recently, I purchased the glass building across from AD Martin, and I need to go, I need to know how to go about getting permission to put a gate across a dead-end alley in the back of this piece of property or something, because my insurance company is requiring me to have a security fence all the way around the building and the property, and in doing so, I'll be creating a dead end, you might say, on a piece of alleyway. And I got, I got pictures if you guys want to look at it, and I don't know how to proceed, so, the thought was, I'll give you the information, and you tell me.
Tony?
Mayor, if I may. Sir, we'll, we'll be happy to work with you, with staff, if you'd like to come in and speak to either myself or our Community Development Director to start with, we'll be happy to get you set up on, on the process.
Okay.
Bruce also serves on our airport board, and we appreciate, appreciate his service.
They tell me I'm the longest-serving member, so.
I bet you are. You've got the same haircut as we, I bet you, I bet you do. Once again, we're at that point, we have a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Motion passes, we're adjourned at 8:15.